Okay, uh, thank you for joining us this evening. In case you're wondering, you've wandered into a meeting of the Situate Zoning Board of Appeals. To my right is Ed Tibbetts, to my...
My left.
To your right is Ed Tibbetts, to my left is Ed Tibbetts, to your left is Tom Kavanaugh, to my right is Tom Kavanaugh. Our chairman, Anthony, cannot be here tonight, so... My name is Brian Sullivan, I'll be acting as chair. With us tonight is Bob Vogel, the Building Commissioner and Zoning Enforcement Officer, and Beth Henigan, joining us as the Recording Secretary for the Zoning Board of Appeals. These meetings are recorded, so if you choose to address the board, you do not have to, but if you do choose to address the board, if you could kindly state your name and address clearly, so that Beth can get that down. We're gonna take things out of order tonight. The first order of business, we've got ten applications, would be...
What was it?
Actually, it's the first one, would be 493 Country Way. And that is the first application. This is a request by Bradford Merritt for a special permit slash finding. In advance of the hearing, they requested a postponement, so I would request... And did you have to recuse yourself on this? So Tom has to recuse himself on this. So by the rule of necessity, this will be a vote of two of the three members, and I would vote that we move to continue that hearing.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that will be continued to the next meeting, which will be the third Thursday night in October.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. And then we will have a quorum. Anthony will be back, and Tom, you wouldn't... You recused yourself on that. So, second application is of Douglas and Lisa Roder for Fox Hill Road, Durham, New Hampshire. They're requesting a special permit slash finding in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or Section 8, 10.2 of Situate zoning bylaw, to raise and reconstruct pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling at 20 Cliff Road South in Situate, increasing the gross floor area by not more than 20 percent. Representing the applicant this evening is Mr. Greg Morse of Morse Engineering. Good evening, Greg.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name's Gregory Morse, I'm a registered engineer with Morse Engineering. Here with the property owner and applicant Doug and Lisa Roder. As was just right into the record, this is a request for a special permit in finding in accordance with Section 8, 10.2 of the bylaw, to allow the raising and reconstruction of a single-family home located at 20 Cliff Road, that's located in the Hummerock section of town. The property itself is in the R3 zoning district, it is not within the floodplain district, it's not within a FEMA floodplain, this is on the cliff as you go up on the northern end of Hummerock. The property is a non-conforming lot, it's developed previously with a single-family home. The single-family home was built in 1941. The house, or the lot, excuse me, is non-conforming with respect to lot area. It has 4,870 square feet, lot width of 50 feet, and frontage of 50 feet. The house that occupies the lot is non-conforming with respect to the front yard setback existing at 26.7 feet, and the side yard setback on the left side, northern side, at 7.9 feet. The proposal here is to take the existing dwelling down, construct a new dwelling, largely located in the same general area, central on the lot, but the new dwelling is bigger in size. It is a two-and-a-half-story building, what's there now is a single-story residence. The footprint that's proposed is 28 feet wide by 36 feet deep, at two-and-a-half stories, represents 2,851 square feet, it's an increase of 246 percent. In looking at the non-conformities, we are correcting the left-side setback, we're bringing it from 7.9 feet to an 8.1-foot setback to bring it into compliance. We maintain the front yard setback at 26.7 as it exists. The right-side setback and the rear yard setback comply with the bylaw. I turn it over to you for any questions or comments.
Tom, do you have any questions or comments?
Greg, is this gonna be elevated?
It's not required to be. It's not in a FEMA floodzone. It is the Roder's intention, though, to keep it up above grade, and to keep it on a piling or a pier foundation, so it'll be three or four feet above grade.
What kind of relief can you from conservation?
So, the majority of the site is in the 100-foot wetland buffer zone to the top of the coastal bank, so we will have to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. All of the works within area that was previously disturbed, we're not altering any resource areas, so I would expect an approval from them.
Ed?
It appears to me that there... Those non-conformities are not something you can do anything about, it's lot size. Basically, you've reduced non-conformities on the side yard setback. It is significant increase in size, but it's a significant increase in size on a relatively small home, so I don't think it's out of sorts with the neighborhood. I don't see any issues with it.
Thank you. As Ed points out, you look at the neighborhood, and I used to live in Hummerock. I'm there in that area at least once a week. I'm familiar with the house, I'm familiar with the area personally, and, you know, the home is a modest-sized home at 814 square feet. I note that it's been in the family for 70 years, it's gonna stay in the family. So I think it's completely reasonable to expect to have a home that's more in keeping with the needs of the family, and I think what's being proposed, a house that's 2,600 square feet, is certainly in keeping with the neighborhood and in keeping with the spirit of the bylaw, 48, Section 6, which does allow a pre-existing, non-conforming dwelling to be extended and increased in floor area.
Brian, just for the record, the family... Our family's house was right next door, 18 Cliff Road. The Andersons', which is what this one is, is 20 Cliff Road. Beverly Anderson, Lisa, and she's my godmother, both families kinda grew up together, so I just wanted to correct that.
Okay. You've been in the area for...
1940.
Yeah.
Not personally, but...
Yeah.
Am I looking?
And we've received some correspondence from at least one of Butters. Is there anybody here tonight? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I sent some correspondence, Carol Cashin.
I'm sorry, could you...
Should I speak?
Yes.
Okay. Carol Cashin, C-A-S-H-I-O-N. I'm a homeowner at 22 Cliff Road.
Thank you.
So, my family is the third family of those three families on the cliff, who've all been there together for 70 years. Again, I'm not quite, so...
No!
We're the same generation, so...
Sure, sure.
Anyway, but let me just first say, as an Butter, we are entirely supportive of this new structure on the site, and, you know, there's a long history of friendship between our families, you know, a 70-year history.
However.
No, okay. I wasn't even gonna say however, I was just gonna go on, but we really understand why Doug and Lisa are excited about building a new home on that lot with lots of room for their family. I just wanna say that, because, you know, these are difficult conversations. I love the idea that our families may, you know, our children, our grandchildren may continue to be neighbors, I hope for another 70, if the Atlantic Ocean...
God willing.
Yeah. But I do have a responsibility as steward of the property that I jointly own with my brother and my sister, and I want to ask that before the special permit is granted, that the board and that the Roder's consider the impact on the Butters of the proposed height. Because as I understand, it reaches nearly to the maximum limit that's permissible for this non-conforming lot. Is that still correct?
Well, they're complying with the zoning bylaw.
Right, which I understand, I know that... But to your point, I think your level of comfort with the size of the house is greater than mine, specifically around the question of height. So I just wanted to say that at the current proposed height of 38 and 1/2 feet, a rough estimate from my perspective is that that new structure is going to be at least 10 feet taller than our home, which is further up the cliff.
Yes.
So this feels to us quite, you know...
Naturally, yes.
Yes. And I just wanted to note that, we certainly understand that raising it up on the pylons, that's a really, really smart thing to do. From our perspective, two-and-a-half floors above that is really going to create quite a different living situation for our home in terms of air, light, views, privacy, really on both floors of our home, southward facing. So, and I also think that, as stated in the letter we submitted, we also feel that that height situation situated on the ocean side of the cliff will have a very strong, and I believe adverse, impact on the whole lower Cliff Road section, where most of the homes have a much more modest profile. I don't know if you received a letter from the neighbors directly across the street as well, John and Carol Greco, they couldn't come tonight, but they also...
Sorry, what was the last name?
Greco?
Yes, we did receive a letter from them.
So I just wanted to, you know, respectfully request that some of these adverse effects be taken into consideration, perhaps by this board, if that's appropriate, to consider some mitigation, some limitation of that size, or if you do grant the special permit tonight, then I ask the Roder's perhaps to consider ways to reduce the building's height as they move forward in the final design, in response to their neighbor's shared concerns.
Thank you. Thank you. Carol, frequently when applicants come to this board for relief, the plans are not finalized, they come in with a conceptual idea of what they're going to do, and as they... As the process moves forward through other boards, where frequently the first stop, things can change, conversations can take place, so I believe the applicants have heard your concerns and heard the concerns of, I think, the Grecos. And what they ultimately do will comply with the zoning bylaw. What they've asked for is for a square footage amount, and which is 224 percent larger than their existing 814 square feet. And frequently, what we've seen on this board in the past is that when folks have a home that is modestly sized, at under 1,000 square feet, they look to expand it, and will approve the square footage, but what that, the ultimate iteration of the house looks like is not something that's the scope of our approval. It will... It'll evolve as it moves its way through the different approval process and through the design process that the applicants will go through. But from a legal standpoint, from the zoning board's standpoint, there's nothing that they've proposed that requires... It's well within the framework of 48, Section 6, it's well within the framework of the Situate zoning bylaw, and this board is empowered to grant the relief that they seek, and they meet all the requirements for the granting of that relief.
I think another, just by way of definition, you cited that the proposed structure, the draft proposal is 38 and 1/2 feet to the very ridge from the grade. When we measure a height of a building, it's actually from the midpoint of the eve to the ridge, so they're actually even more significantly lower than they could go. They could go to 45? Is it 45?
I would defer to Bob.
45 to the ridge.
35 to a point midway between the...
40 to the ridge, so they're...
So this is a...
They're lower than they...
Below that.
Below it, so...
According to the drawings I have in front of me.
Can I add on scale?
Yeah. Hey, I'm sorry, can I just, just to clarify, so what you're approving is the footprint and the square footage?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sorry, what was the final square... What was the...
2,640 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Or less.
Yeah.
May I make a question? We submitted our revised plan, it was 2,851 is the total square footage.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the application, so...
So the revised plan.
Revised plan of 916, so it's brand-new, 2,851.
I apologize, Carol. It's 2,851?
Yeah.
Thank you, Greg. And, I'm sorry, Greg, the math on that?
What's 246.
246 percent increase. Are there any other folks that would like to speak either in favor or opposed to this? Yes, ma'am?
Alicia Flaherty, 10 Civil Road, 4th Cliff, Hummerock. I too am concerned about the height. Maybe I didn't understand it correctly, did you say that it is not in the floodplain, so it does not have to be up on stilts, but it is going to be up on stilts and the two-and-a-half stories will top it up?
Greg, it is not in the floodplain, is that correct?
Correct, the structure is not in the floodplain.
Secondly, they are going to put it on pilings, and the pilings are gonna be above ground?
About three feet.
About three feet.
Three feet of clearance underneath.
So there is a need to put them on the...
Whether there is a need or not, that is what they intend to do. It is not in the floodplain, it will be on pilings.
One might argue that if you were to put a foundation under it, you would be disturbing the cliff in a greater degree. I don't know whether that's practical or not, but pilings are certainly a legitimate foundation format for structures in this area. So it's not... We're not looking at pilings, it's not a 30-foot-high pilings and then a house on top of it, it's just about the height of a... If it was a poured concrete foundation, it would be a similar height.
Same as the Afro.
Did you have any other questions?
No.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak in favor or on this application? Motion?
I'll make a motion on the application of Douglas and Lisa Roder, 4 Fox Hill Road, Durham, New Hampshire, for a special permit finding in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 6, and 8, 10.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw, on the application of 20 Cliff Road South, Situate, Mass, that the raise and reconstruct is not create any new non-conformities or intensify any existing non-conformities to the extent that it does, it is not substantially detrimental, as has been submitted on the plan drawn by Morse Engineering, dated 7/23/19 and revised 9/16/19.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
There you go.
Beth, I'll write that.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming out. I hope the Butters stick around.
Fun's just only beginning.
Fun has just started. I can't wait for Barker Road. Third application is of Kieran Whalen, or Whelan, 57 Seaside Road. Mr. Whalen is requesting a special permit slash finding in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or Section 8, 10.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw, to construct a third-floor addition to the pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family home at 57 Seaside Road in Situate, and increasing the gross floor area by more than 20 percent. Representing the application, the applicant this evening, Mr. Whalen. And with you, Mr. Whalen, is...
With me is my sister-in-law, Judy McGrady.
I'm sorry, Judy?
McGrady.
McGrady, thank you. And what is it that you're looking to do, Mr. Whalen?
Add a third floor to the existing footprint of the house.
Do you have an engineer with you this evening?
I have a... I just got design plans, but I have a structural stamp also, which I just got today, which I just have it with me, I didn't... You guys don't have that yet.
The structural stamp is having to do with the building itself.
Yeah, the way we intend to construct it, with hurricane ties, et cetera.
There's a site plan, looks as though it's from Ross Engineering?
Yes.
From 2017, do you have a current one?
I don't.
No, what we got here?
Photograph.
It's a photograph of the stamp.
2017. Mr. Whalen, we will need a plan stamped by a registered land surveyor or engineer before we can approve what you're looking to do. Because right now, we don't have... We have something from Ross Engineer, Ross Engineers, or Ross Engineering, strike that, but it's not stamped. So essentially, it's a plan, but it's not an official plan. We've got some photos, deed, but this... There's not enough information here for the board to issue a decision. Having said that, you're looking to add a third floor?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any plans of what you're proposing to do?
Yes, I believe there...
It's within the structure?
Yeah, there's no extension of the structure, it's within the footprint of the actual house.
Typically, when folks come to this board for relief, they have a plan stamped by a surveyor, and they have plans of what they propose to do, especially if it's within the footprint, so if you can get that to us, how much time do you need?
Probably three, four days.
Oh, okay, I mean, a week, two weeks?
No, no, no.
I don't wanna unduly burden you.
No, no, I just... I thought the 2017 one would have been sufficient, but...
It is... It's not stamped by a surveyor or an engineer.
Okay.
So it is not sufficient.
Okay.
It's conceivable you could contact Ross Engineering, and they could certify it, change the date, certify it as today.
Okay.
Presumably, nothing's changed.
I believe he's here, I might talk to him later.
I would imagine it should be a relatively straightforward discussion.
Okay. But having said that, I don't... It may, it may not be, I have no knowledge of that, but I want to give you a sufficient amount of time to submit something to the board.
Okay.
Having said that, there's no increase in the footprint, it's adding some square footage, it's a...
It's an 810.
Yeah, and the proposed square footage is... You're not reducing the size. It says that the current square footage is 1,242 square feet, and the proposed square footage would be...
Is an additional 620.
Is an additional 620, so it'd be...
1862.
1862.
I'm good math.
I didn't know there was gonna be math tonight. Tom, any...
Besides the fact that there's no stamp plan?
I apologize, I thought that plan was stamped for...
Yeah, typically, I mean, there's been some turmoil in the building department in terms of staffing, so before... And in terms of the meeting tonight, I was unaware that the chairman wouldn't be here. But typically, before this would be accepted for filing, we'd make sure that you had everything in order.
Mm-hmm.
So, but again, that's a problem for us, not for you. You did everything that you were asked to do. So that's why we'll conduct the hearing, but we can't issue the decision...
Okay.
Until we have the appropriate paperwork from you.
Okay.
Ed, anything?
We can have a finding.
Sure.
We can complete a finding after we have public discussion about it, and then pending receipt of...
Yeah, we took your money.
...paperwork.
We advertised it. We weren't shy about that.
And just looking at your package, you also... You do have a photograph or facsimile of this... What appears to be this plan, and it appears to have a stamp on it, so there may be one that in your possession, something to look at.
Okay.
But again, this is one of those things that I'm looking at, the non-conformities are basically lot size and width, et cetera. These are non-conformities you can't remedy. The bylaw is specific to that. I think the only reason you're here is because it's an undersized lot, and because you're looking to increase the size by more than 20 percent, which was a bylaw we enacted about 10 or 15 years ago.
10, 10 or so, yeah.
So adding an additional floor to the house, as long as you're staying within the height structure, the height of the building, you'd have to maintain that, be compliant in the bylaw in that respect. I don't see any alternative to what you're doing, asking you to relocate the house or anything, won't make a change, so I don't see any problem with it.
You're keeping the existing structure.
Right. Existing foundation, existing structure.
Yeah. When was the house built?
1979.
After the store.
After the...
Mm-hmm.
That's it, okay. Is there anybody here that would like to speak about this application? Yes, sir.
My name is Peter Mackey, spelled M-A-K-E-Y, resident at 59 Seaside Road, direct neighbor.
Yes.
Been there for about 21 years. My concern is, we're gonna lose light. We've got a whole 'nother story going on in the house, it's gonna shade, it's on the east or on the southerly side, so if you get the minimum sunlight in the winter as it is, it's gonna block the evening light. I've also suffered loss of light on the westfully side when the new house was constructed, that's a three-story skyscraper, already losing sunlight at the end of the day, so in the wintertime, you're getting very little sunlight. Also concerned about how much more occupancy could add to the house. All the lots there are very, very small, there's very limited parking, and many times the parking lot is full of cars, although right to the right of the road, that's a shared right of light, that's a concern as well.
Thank you. As you heard with the last application, it complies with the Situate Building Code. Where people park, you know, if they're parking illegally, that's outside the purview of the board. You know, the number of bedrooms that he'll add, the occupancy, that's, again, that's... It's something that the board does consider, but it's tied into his ability to get sewer flow, and while the... There's no sewer moratorium, we've seen throughout the town, people adding bedrooms. There was a moratorium in place for almost 20 years where no bedrooms could be added, and you were in town for that period of time. So again, it's well within the scope of the law, and within his legal right to utilize his property. He's in front of us because he's increasing the size by greater than 20 percent, but at 1,200 square feet, it's certainly a modest-sized home, and increasing its size by 50 percent, although, of course, given the scope of the lot, it's a 5,000-square-foot lot, the only place he can go is up. You know, that's... He's kind of limited by his location. And as far as what happened with your neighbors, that's, again, that's kind of out of our heads.
But my understanding is loss of light is considered, obviously, it's gonna diminish the value of my property.
I respectfully disagree that it's obvious that it would diminish the value of your property.
Obviously, it's gonna diminish my... Obviously, that's going to diminish my enjoyment of the property.
It may.
So will limiting part of the daylight in the winter months. My understanding, that is brightest protected in the zoning.
Articulated by 48, Section 6, we look to see whether the proposed changes will be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the current improvements on the property. A neighborhood is not a single neighbor, we look at the neighborhood as a whole. And given that, I believe that this is in compliance with the spirit and the language of 48, Section 6.
Can I ask, the, the height regulation, is that determined from the grade, the grade of the ground, or is that determined?
Yes, it is. It's determined from the average grade at the foundation of the land abutting, the house, or in this case, the foundation.
So it's on par, it's going to be the ground, so...
Yeah, I mean, that was a question that I had without seeing the proposed architectural workup. Is it going to meet the height requirements because you're starting, as I read, the plan about six feet in the air? Your first floor is about six feet above grade right now.
That grade's appreciably changed in 20 years that I've lived there because of coastal flooding. It's actually built up higher and higher than the original grade.
Well, this was, this plan's only a couple of years old, so I'm taking that as a guideline at least, but yes, we definitely check that. That typically doesn't come into play in terms of requirements until a zoning permit is applied for, I mean, excuse me, a building permit is applied for.
So that's the building inspector's the one that...
That's, that's...
That's who you're talking to. That's the horse as well.
We're the final word on compliance with that regulation. The other thing I would say is that there's no record of a, an elevation certificate in our office. I checked for that, do you have one?
Yeah, it's not in the package.
That's, that's okay, I mean, I don't need to see it.
Yeah.
But I would like a, I would like a copy of it at some point, it's convenient.
I believe there's one with the 10 packages, I...
Did not see it.
Didn't see one either.
I didn't see one either.
But in any event, that's something that, it's not necessary for us to have an elevation certificate for us to issue our decision.
Okay.
We will need a stamped plan. And before you get a building permit, that sounds like something the building department will need, that the building commissioner will need.
Understood.
So, but again, that's separate from our deliberations. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this application? Ed or Tom, want to make a motion?
Move to find that, on the application of Karen Whalen, 57 Surfside Road, Seaside Road, for a finding in accordance with MGL 48, Section 6, and Section 810.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw, that the proposed additional third-floor addition will not create any new non-conformities in the, or extend any existing non-conformities, to the extent that it may they're considered...
Not more substantially...
Not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and with the provision that the applicant provide a stamped plan that supports the evidence of the February 2nd, 2017 plan proposed by, or prepared by Ross Engineering, which we have in the packet.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So if you get the chance, please get that plan to, to the zoning...
So just the plan that you had?
A, a plan that supports the same information.
You just want to stamp on that? The plan that you just folded up?
So you, you gave us the February plan, so you were going to want to talk to Ross Engineering?
Right, that's fine, but I just need the stamp on that plan that, that you just folded.
The engineer needs to, yeah, certify that.
All right, thank you.
The next application is of Elizabeth McGee of 28 Standish Avenue in Situate. Ms. McGee seeks a special permit slash finding under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or Section 810.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw, to allow the raising and reconstructing of the pre-existing non-conforming, single-family home at 28 Standish Ave., Situate, Mass., increasing the gross floor area by more than 20 percent. Representing the applicant this evening is Mr. Paul Marabito of Ross Engineering. Good evening, Paul.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
It's a shame you're going to tear this house down. I love this house.
The applicant has owned this house since 1974, and I believe members are a family owned it prior to 12. The house structurally is in really good condition, it was built in 1900. We have filed with the Historical Commission, I began the review last night, but let's postpone from next week. What they're seeking is to increase the gross floor area of living space of the house by 194 percent. The existing house is in the gross net area, but adjacent to it is a covered porch. The roof area of that structure is outlined in the green, the solid line around it is a covered house. Under the drawing, you can see that the policy is such as, within a foot or two of the footprint of the existing one. The setbacks that we're proposing is the rear yard would increase from 0.9 feet to 2 feet, and on the west Philly side, it would go from 1.4 feet to 3 feet. The left side of the house would go from 14, no, no, sorry, from 15.9 feet to 14.4 feet, which is within the setback in the area.
So you're reducing the side in the rear non-conformities, and you're conforming on the front and the, the other side?
Yes. And the reason for placing the house in exactly the same location is that the owner's very concerned about the neighbors losing their view. She explained to us that she is very adamant about this, that the view of this house is through here, there's another home in here where their view is in this area here. That's the reason for the placement of the house. You notice, they don't have a driveway there, they've never had one. The front yard is spot marked by some ledge outcrop. It is untowed sewer, untowed water. The existing home is about 22 to 24 feet height, the new home would be approximately about 4 feet larger to a peak, as measured from the average grade around the house. This, this lot is relatively flat. I do have a picture of the new house, it's somewhat similar to the designs there now. And again, the reason for this is because the lot is only 5,000 square feet, it doesn't meet the lot furniture requirements. If they put that on the presentation, is there any questions you remain out?
Thank you. Ed?
No, similar to the previous applications, I, you answered my question, Paul, the, my concern is why not pull it a little bit more forward off the back lot line, or slide it to the side to get a little more relief? The reductions in non-conformities are miniscule, I mean, de minimis?
De minimis.
Is that a good word?
Not, not in this case.
Ah, darn, I like using big words, no. But it's a, it's small, so, but I, I appreciate the applicant's desire to accommodate neighbors, we always look for that in our meetings, and I can appreciate the ledge outcropping. You haven't done any boring, you don't know what the, where the ledge goes from there, but we could see, we easily be looking, moving it closer to the ledge could be, result in issues as well.
You mean, the soils are probably poor, that's probably why they've been on sewer so long?
Yeah. So I don't, I don't see any...
The subdivision plan was, was prepared in 1896, and this house was built four years later, it's probably one of the original homes down there.
Oh, yeah, totally, it looks, it's such a cool-looking house.
Structurally, you wouldn't want to, everything's still by four, which is on center.
It was a cottage, it was a neighborhood of cottages.
Exactly what it was.
I used to hang out at the house across the street, the McCarthy's house, and I always, I always liked this house, I mean, from when I was in my teens, such a, it's such a cool-looking house. But, you know, it's progress.
A new one's going to look probably better, because it's got that old style to it, the old...
Yeah, I know the house too.
Oh, you know what, see, there you go. Tom?
No, I feel the same way. I was, I was thinking too, if they could move it a little bit closer, but you get closer to the ledge, you're just looking for issues, literally.
Inviting problems. And it's nice that they were thoughtful, considerate of the neighbors and not impacting their existing views. It's not always possible to accommodate, to expand and accommodate the neighbors, so it's nice when, when that can happen. Anything else?
No.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this application? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Catherine Hogan, 12 Standish Avenue. We call it the summer 42 house, this is not gospel, but according to a woman who lived across the street from this home, this was the carriage house to her house going back a zillion years. Reason I came tonight is what I was concerned about, if they were going to go up and take away a little scale part of my view. Apparently, it's not going to go too tall?
No, no, it's not.
Thank you very much.
It was stated that it would go up 4 feet, approximately, so...
By with me.
That's good to hear.
Thank you, that's, that's rare. Welcome, but rare. Anybody else?
I move to find that the raise and reconstruction of the property at 28 Standish Ave. on the application of Elizabeth Maggie will not, McGee, will not increase any existing non-conformities, in fact, it will diminish some, reduce some, and to the extent that it does, they will not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, or more detrimental to the neighborhood, and find under 810.2 that the increase in square footage will not be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll do that one.
Thanks, Ed, I was going to do that, but that's...
No, 20 and 20, you know, once I get the template open.
Now the fun starts.
Yeah.
Now, the next application is of the luckless Mr. Paul Rodriguez of 22 Gate Street in Carver. Mr. Rodriguez is in the unfortunate position of requesting a retroactive variance from the required 30-foot setback in the R3 district pursuant to Master and Law 48, Section 10, in the Situate zoning bylaw, Section 620.3, to permit an encroachment of 1.8 feet into the required 30-foot frontage setback for the single-family dwelling at 36 Barker Road in Situate. Representing the applicant this evening is...
Paul Rodricks, this is Caitlin and Andrew McLean, the owners.
Good evening, welcome. What the heck is going on here?
So a lot of thought was put in, in over a year of designing the house, and very little thought to the garage. After the foundation was poured, they looked at the size of the garage and figured out that if they were going to put their boat in the garage, it wouldn't fit. So we discussed it, and not thinking about the property line, because we had plenty of setback in the other corner, we elected to bump the foundation out 4 feet.
Sure.
And in doing so, we went 1.8 feet into the setback.
Before you poured the foundation, had the property been surveyed?
Uh, we, uh, yes.
And did you have it staked out so that the foundation was poured in conformance with the setbacks?
Yes.
So was it Drunky the Clown that put out the, put out the forms? I mean, why did he get, why did he get poured, so that you created an encroachment? How did that happen?
It happened was the garage was poured, and then it was increased in size.
So that was re-poured?
It was re-poured, yes.
It was re-poured. Well, guess what? You got to pour it again. Well, anyway, after the hearing, you'll have to pour it again. Anyway, so kindly continue your narrative.
So we had an existing garage that was 9.1 feet from the lot line.
Yes.
And we're now 28-1, and we're, we're seeking relief.
Okay, do you, do you understand the, the standard for the granting of a variance, whether it's prospective or retroactive? Is that it's an extraordinarily high threshold that virtually nobody meets, and it's that you, that due to the unique topography, geography, or geology of the location, absent the granting of a variance, a substantial hardship would occur. And the hardship cannot be of your own creation. So can you elicit or describe any hardship that would occur if this variance would not be granted?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you, thanks for not, thanks for being straight with us, because this is, this is a hardship that was created by you, and sorry, the storage of a boat is not a hardship, or kayaks, for that matter. We had another application where somebody needed kayak storage, and they thought they should get a variance for that, and they were told that, in no uncertain terms, that the lack of kayak storage was not a hardship. So you don't meet the standard, and this board would exceed its authority if it were to grant the variance. And it's unfortunate that you've had to go through, all, jump through all of these hoops, and you're going to have to tear down, you know, 3 feet of the garage, or whatever it is, so it is in compliance. But that is what you're going to have to do, because there's no, you're not even close to the standard for the granting of the variance. Now, if you had come in front of this board for a finding before this happened, you would have the protection of 48, Section 6, and something may have been able to have been done. But chances are, it would not, it would never grant, I'm sorry, we would be unlikely to grant a variance. There may have been a finding that would have permitted a garage, or pulling the garage back, but once that garage was demolished, you lost its protection. And what you have done is outside the scope of the law. You've created a new, a new non-conformity that is impermissible. And again, this board would, would break the law if we were to issue a variance. It would exceed our, our authority, and we'd likely, I'm guessing, be sued by one or all of the neighbors, and they would have every legal justification to do so, and my guess is the Superior Court or the Land Court would, would overturn the board. They'd win, yeah. And this board, in my tenure, has never been overturned in 21 years, so we'd like to keep our, our Perry Mason near-perfect record intact. Tom, is there anything you want to add?
No, the fact that it was already in one spot, and it was conforming, and then it was moved out, just goes to show that it could be just, it could be moved right back.
Yeah. Ed?
No, looking at the plan, even if this, this application came before us to raise and reconstruct, and there was protection under 48, Section 6, we would probably look at it and say, there's plenty of, you've got a, what, a 60-foot setback on the, what would be the rear of the house, this whole thing could move 4 feet. I mean, if it's absolutely essential, you have a 38-9 garage, lift the whole house up and move it 3 feet over, and it would, you'd be in compliance. Or you can take 4 feet off the, 3 feet, whatever it is, off the garage. So I don't, I don't see the justification for variance, and by your own admission, you can't present one.
You don't, sorry.
Yeah.
Is there anybody that would like to, is there anything else?
No.
Is there anybody that would like to speak on this application? Having heard what the board has said, yes, ma'am?
I'd just like to say thank you. These people have not been accommodating, Barbara Connelly from 32 Barbara Road.
Thank you.
And they have not been accommodating to their neighbors at all since the beginning of this project.
Well, I'm talking about the relief that they're seeking, I'm not talking about them personally. They may have won, they could have won the Nobel Peace Prize for resolving the conflict in Northern Ireland, it would be irrelevant to the application. The question is, are they entitled to a variance, yes or no? Do you have any information to offer on that, yes or no? And if you do, we'll, we'll be here until you finish. And if you do, we'll, we'll be here until you finish. But we can't have attacks on people individually.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
We just appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Your, your, your name, your name?
Rita Sander, 15 Marriage Road. It's just tough to have to, nobody wants to be here. And this is so unwarranted.
I respectfully object to you saying that. This is the highlight, this is the highlight of my week.
It does cause people a lot of stress. It's clearly unwarranted if any look at any court document or, I mean, just a simple Google search told exactly what you just said. And, you know, you lose sleep over these things, these neighbors.
And as an editorial comment, I would only suggest that in these, in a zoning hearing, we often have folks who are not thrilled with changes in the neighborhood or whatever. And sometimes things are said that we're all still going to be neighbors. And people who live closer to projects are going to be closer neighbors. And we share the, uh, the pleasures of Situate. And the best thing, I think, sometimes is we'll do what we can under the, what we have to do under the law, what we can do for relief when we can do it. And, um, we hope that everyone considers that if you were before us as a property owner, you'd want the same kind of fair treatment.
We try and be fair with, with everyone who comes in front of us. Applicants, abutters, engineers, lawyers even. And, uh, and treat everyone the way, because at one point, I was on the other side of this table. Treat the way we'd want to be treated ourselves. So you want a fair hearing. You want to be able to, uh, speak your piece and know that your concerns have been heard by the board and, uh, and that the board is going to be fair and deliberate. And they're going to apply the law equally, no matter who you are, what your name is, or who's representing you. That this board will act judiciously as much as possible and act fairly. And I, I feel bad for the applicant coming in front of us tonight. I don't think that they did this, um, is, uh, I think it was, it was a rash act that the applicant took. And it was done clearly without tremendous amount of thought. But they are here in front of us. And you've heard that the board is, uh, not wavering in applying the law. And they will have to take steps in compliance with bringing the garage in compliance with the Situate zoning bylaw in terms of the setback. And that's going to be at a substantial cost to someone. So, um, thank you. Sorry.
An angle cut on the corner will do it.
So you'll, you'll figure it out. And, you know, I, architecturally, I think the, the house is interesting. And, uh, in, it's the way the neighborhood is going. It's a, it's a, it's a beautiful neighborhood.
It's a great spot.
It's a, it's a spectacular spot. And, you know, congratulations for moving to the neighborhood. And I hope in time, you know, you can bake some cookies and make peace. And, uh, and you guys can all move on. But I, again, I, I, you guys are doing your best, so.
Thanks.
Should we withdraw or do not?
No, we, we need to, we need to deny their request for a variance. And then, um, then Bob, you'll take it from there. So, um, so I move that we deny their request for a variance inasmuch as the request for the variance does not comply with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-A, Section 10.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I'll write that and we'll send that out. Thanks for coming in. Next up is, um, William Slocum, 48 Townway Extension, Situate, Mass. Mr. Slocum is requesting a special permit slash finding in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-A, Section 6, and/or Section 470.6F, eight ten point two, eight thirty of the Situate zoning bylaw, to, um, raise and/or substantially improve a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residential structure that had been damaged by accidental causes on a pre-existing non-conforming lot in the floodplain and watershed protection district. Lost my place. And in residence R3 zoning district at 47 Townway Extension, Situate, Mass. And to reconstruct, extend, or alter, I don't know. Did, do we get two application fees from, you guys are getting greedy here. To reconstruct, extend, as alter said, dwelling by replacement with the structure to be removed from Forty-A, Forty-Eight Townway Extension, Situate, Mass, such that the resulting non, resulting reconstruction structure will be less non-conforming, will not be substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood than the damaged and/or existing non-conforming structure used as currently present. Representing the applicant this evening is the aforementioned Greg Morse. And with Mr. Morse this evening is attorney Jeff DeLeese. Jeff, you're seeking relief on two lots?
I think the decision should reference that the finding applies to two lots. And the notification in the application concerned both lots. But the, the, uh, the specific raise and reconstruct is on Forty-seven Townway Extension.
Should you not pay two application fees?
I'm happy to send a second.
No, no, no. I'm just giving you a hard time.
The administrator didn't request it.
Anyway.
Arguably, arguably, there's, the, the change on the one lot is just simply moving part of the building away. And it's, it's actually reducing any non-conformity, so.
It, uh, that is, that is an excellent argument.
And, and, and he certainly wouldn't suffer any, um, uh, problem unless he was trying to reconstruct. So he's, he's voluntarily raising.
So it's almost like a demo.
He's choosing a demo.
We were this close to getting more money out of them. So, um, thank you.
What, so we can get paid more?
Double my salary. Okay, um, Greg, do you want to, Jeff, do you want to have Greg?
Why don't I just, for purposes of, I know that you guys have a letter for me, but the, for purposes of folks in the audience and the public, just do a quick run-through as to what's happening here. I'm here with Bill Slocum, who's my client, sitting behind me along Greg Morse. The Slocums are a multi-generational Situate family. And, uh, we're very excited to bring this application because I think that it really kind of is the type of smart planning that's encouraged by the town and the government and so forth. And it requires, it does require a bit of explanation. The home at Forty-seven Townway Extension, which is on the west side of Townway Extension, Townway Extension, was, uh, was constructed in nineteen thirty-five. And it presently sits directly on the sand at Peggy Beach, pretty much.
Or under the sand.
Yeah, partially under at this point. The, uh, the house has been boarded up. It's been, um, it's, it's been through a series of storms and it's in, it's in really tough shape. Last year, uh, the building inspector sent a letter to the owner back in August of two thousand and eighteen. I think with the purpose of demonstrating that, uh, that it probably complies or qualifies for a grant to reconstruct the house because it's a damaged structure. Under the building code, if, um, if, if, if a building, if a building is, requires an improvement that exceeds half of the value of the home, then it's necessary or required to bring the whole home up into compliance with the, the building code. That requirement actually requires it to be brought onto piles and removed outside of the floodplain. The first floor is to be, I believe, a foot or two above, uh, the FEMA said floodplain elevation. So our clients own Forty-eight Townway Extension on the east side of that road. And many people recognize that house because it's pretty much, it's, it's the house on Peggy Beach that's on pilings and kind of hanging out into the ocean.
It's like motif number one in Rockport.
Yeah.
Peggy Beach.
So it's, uh, it's an interesting, uh, house itself because it's actually two cottages that are joined by a, um, a covered porch. So it's one structure, but there's, there's literally two cottages that are connected as part of that structure.
Yeah, I would never have guessed that.
Me neither.
Yeah.
Looks like one structure.
Surprised to me. I, I think that it had something to do with the Blizzard of seventy-eight and the house being kind of knocked off of the foundation. So in any event, the concept here is to kind of have a win-win situation, which is to raise the house at Forty-seven Townway Extension, drive the piles, and then remove the eastern portion of the, uh, the eastern cottage from, uh, which is about thirty linear feet, um, off of its piles at Forty-eight Townway Extension and to literally move it across the street and drop it on the new piles. And so obviously, we believe that we're eliminating, um, uh, uh, some problems and creating some solutions in a thoughtful way. The size of the home after the reconstruction will be slightly over twenty percent larger than what it is presently. It'll be, um, uh, one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight square feet. And it will comply with all dimensional yard requirements and height requirements. And so we just need a special permit under the floodplain bylaw for substantial improvements to an existing structure. And we need a finding under, uh, Section Eight, Ten Point Two, and Forty-Eight, Section Six. So, um, with that, I'm happy to have Greg. If, uh, if you want him to explain the plan visually or answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm going to hold off on Greg saying anything because I think your narrative adequately describes it. And Greg would only confuse us more, or confuse me more. I think it's great that you're preserving the house and you're going to move it across the street. I think that's fantastic. And obviously make some improvements in the process. And I, I can't imagine that anything could be done to save the, this cottage, which is virtually buried. I mean, the last, I was, I was by after another storm a couple of years ago and it was, it's, uh, it's a shame, but it's, it's in rough shape. And I don't know, even if you had the, the resources, it would make sense to improve that cottage. But it's great that the Slocums are stepping up to the plate and they're going to, you know, preserve their house and, and put it up on pilings across the street. Ed, do you have any thoughts or questions?
No, your brief indicates that the, um, your client has entered into a purchase and sale agreement with the, um, Margaret McGann of the property that's going to be taken down. Do we need evidence?
Yeah, we just need evidence of.
They can act on their behalf.
Yeah, we need evidence of site control.
Well, I, I believe that Ms. McGann joint, um, gave authorization for the filing of the application in writing, so.
I just didn't.
Do we have that?
I, I didn't, I didn't see it. It might well be here.
That's okay. It was submitted after the filing of the application, so it might not have made its way into your application package. But I can assure you, it was filed.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that. I just, it's, uh, it's more of a housekeeping matter on our part.
I, 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 um, with all due respect, is I just, I, I, purchase and sale agreements are not the type of thing that I want to put into.
No, I'm not asking for a purchase and sale agreement. Just a statement from the, the owner of the property that your, um, that your client is authorized to act on in conjunction with the property.
If it were submitted, it can be a redacted copy. It's, we don't, we just need to know that your, your client has site control. So if you've submitted a letter, you've submitted a letter.
Great.
Absent that, a copy, a redacted copy of the purchase and sale agreement is adequate as well. Tom, do you have any questions?
Nothing.
I just think it's, uh, it's great what you're doing. And so, yeah, it is.
I want to know when they, when they're going to do it. I want to watch it.
Yeah, oh my, bring my kids to watch it, too.
That's going to be, that's going to be quite a show.
You have a track unit moving, moving, so.
Don't go to the Fourth of July.
I would guess.
Yeah, Fourth of July.
Are you going up above the, the westerly structure and going over it or going around it?
You're going to like just slide it? Do you know?
If I were moving, I could answer that. I don't know.
It's the front portion, right, that's coming?
Yes, you got to break it around. The westerly portion, you get to the westerly side.
I, I just think it's great. I think it's great. Is there anybody here in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Yes, sir?
I have a question. My name is Art Gibson. I'm a neighbor on, uh, Inter Harbor Road. We are, all the neighbors, I think I'm speaking for, and we're all very much in favor of Mr. Slocum moving back. But I'm a little confused in the way the explanation came down about, is the whole house moving back or just half of the house?
Half of the house.
The easterly portion of the house, which seems to have a, has a different architectural nature to it, the westerly portion of the house, which is basically just a cube with a gable roof. The easterly portion, it's got a little, it's got two different height roofs on it. That's being moved to the west, to the other side. So the, the, the part that's furthest from the ocean of the oceanfront house is going to remain and the pilings are going to be decked. So that, that, there'll be a cottage there with a deck in front of it on, on the existing pilings. Is that more or less correct?
Yeah, it's, it's about thirty, it's about thirty linear feet in the, in the, from the very end of the rear of the house back. And the one thing that I did want to mention to the board is, uh, the plan doesn't show up, but I think it's, it's inconsequential. The, the house, the portion of the house that's remaining at Forty-eight has a stairway and a deck on the southerly side. And, um, the plan inadvertently leaves the stairway and the deck where they are. They're actually going to be pushed westerly so that the end of the deck meets the end of the house.
But that, that doesn't.
But that's irrelevant to the zoning issue.
Thank you for pointing it out, but you're correct.
Yeah, and you could, Greg has a nice photo there.
Photo here. The, the left side, we're going to cut the house essentially right in the middle here. The left side is the piece that's being relocated across the street. The right side, this here, is the piece that's to remain.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah. Drew Shealy, fifteen Townway. I think it's great that they're moving back. My grandmother's house is actually the house that's right next to the Slocum's house. And I understand they're moving the part that survived the seventy-eight is going to, so are they creating two lots? Are they going to own two separate lots? Or is it one continuous lot?
No, no, it's two, it's two lots. It's divided by Townway, which is a public way.
Right.
So there'll be two lots.
Well, Townway Extension.
Town, Townway Extension.
It's not, it's not a public way, right?
Private way.
I'm sorry, I thought it was a private.
Ownership can be.
Yeah, we're retaining the two-lot separation.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's just going to be two houses there?
Two houses on two lots.
Two separate lots.
Correct.
Another, another way to think about it is the house on the ocean side of, of the private way is going to be reduced in size. The house on the westerly side is going to be taken down and replaced.
And raised.
But they're getting all the, all the material from the other lot.
Right.
In one piece.
In one piece.
It's already nailed together. What will become of the forward pilings?
The ocean.
They'll be decked.
A deck.
There'll be a deck over those, temporarily, the way things are going.
We might be able to remove a few of them, but, but some will remain to support the deck.
Yeah. So. So, but that's, that, they, their deck could go out even further. If they, if they so choose, they could put more pile, I mean, they'd have to probably go in front of conservation. But the, the deck, from a zoning perspective, the deck could extend another, uh, hundred.
Hundred fifty feet.
Hundred, yeah. It's not likely that that will happen. And they're not asking for relief to do that. They could, yeah, there'd be a, in a nightclub. Any other?
That'd be against some.
Yes.
I hope the deck's open by the fourth.
There are some nightclubs we can find.
Are there any other questions or comments? I'd just like to thank the Slocums for, for, for preserving the house and for going through this process. It's not, uh, it's probably not the, the least expensive, uh, way to do this. But I think it's the way that they're preserving, um, these two historically significant homes to, you know, to their, the family. And, uh, it's, it's nice to see them take the effort to do that. And, uh, and taking this house, removing the, the house that's precarious now and preserving it for, you know, hopefully future generations, you know? I, I don't know if you all have been in the room, but there are certain. You know, I don't know if you all have been in the room, but there are certain areas of town where families, like in Hummerock and down in Shore Acres, where families are kind of custodians of a house for generations, and they're like the stewards of the property for the next generation, so it's nice to see when folks step up and preserve that, and when neighbors have a sense of that, so that's nice to see. Anything else? Tom, do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion on the application of William Slocum, 48 Townway Extension, Situate, Massachusetts, for a special permit finding in accordance with Chapter 48, Section 6, as well as Sections 470.6F and 810.2 and 830 of the Situate zoning bylaw, that the request to remove a portion of the dwelling at 48 Townway Extension and raise the property at 47 Townway Extension and thereby replace it with the portion from 48, as depicted on the plan by Morse Engineering dated 8/7/19 in revised September 17, 2019, will not create any new nonconformities or intensify any existing nonconformities, however, to the extent that it would, it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in accordance with 470.6A through F that the Board issued a special permit as well.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Greg.
Jeff, can you?
Yeah, I'll draft it.
Thanks. The next application is of the beloved Toll Brothers, Toll Massachusetts Land III Partnership, requesting a special permit slash finding in accordance with Situate zoning bylaw, Section 710.2, or any other relief the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the installation of signage at a portion of their property that faces Hathley Road, is it, or Tilden Road?
Both.
Both, thank you.
So, Jeff Delisi, I'm here with Dave Buckley. Dave is the project manager for the Toll Brothers project here in Situate. As you know, I think you've probably noticed by now, in May 17 of 2018, the planning board issued a special permit to the Toll Brothers to allow for 142 residences and 10 single-family dwellings on approximately 70 acres of land off of Hathley and Tilden Roads. Of the 70 acres thereabouts, about 55 acres lies between Hathley and Tilden Roads, and that's where the 142 residences will be accessed by the public from one entranceway road that has an entrance on Hathley and has another entrance on Tilden. So, there's, for the public purposes, access to those 142 residences will be an access point on Hathley and an access point on Tilden. As part of the special permit process, the planning board and the design review committee considered signage, and the final approved plans by the planning board contain details about signage, and actually, the special permit, Condition 45, contained language that said that the signage shall be as shown on the plans, and that all temporary signage shall be removed at the completion of the project unless approved by the building inspector to remain. But I'm sure the board recognizes its own jurisdiction, and under Section 710 of the zoning bylaw, the EBA and not the building inspector, or the planning board, or the town planner, has the specific and exclusive jurisdiction to issue special permits for signage. And so, Bob asked me to come in, basically, as a perfunctory measure, even though we've kind of gone over signage already, to request that the board issue this special permit. Dave's going to explain what the signage requests are, but I, under Section 710.2, the board has issued a finding that the sign is reasonable in design and size, that the sign is economically necessary, and that the sign will not be a hazard to the public. The sign, under the bylaw, can't exceed 100 square feet in size, and so, but the bylaw contains a provision that signage may be permitted along travel ways for purposes of indicating direction to a facility such as this type of facility. And it's been done many times in Situate. So, Dave will give a short presentation, but essentially, we're looking for the approval for four permanent signs, one on the southerly side and one on the northerly side of each of the two entranceways, and the signage will be about 10 square feet each. So, Dave, if you want to-
Pretty much summed up most of my-
That's what I'm trying to do.
What I have to say, it's pretty much-
There are going to be signs. Thanks, Jeff.
Flated, and most, not much left to say. So, the approved plan, set as part of the special permit, and I believe you have some copies maybe in front of you, shows a combination of masonry and a faux paneling that's going to be built at the two entryways. Both at Tilden and Hathley main entryways, there is going to be these sections of radiused entryways, which, to the backing, and I have a sample of which I can show you right now, the signage will actually be mounted to that signage. This is sort of like a faux wood paneling that will be installed as a wall, and the signage will be mounted to that. The signage, which is the seaside at Situate, name of the community, and the directional for the community in itself, as Jeff just stated, is going to be approximately five square feet per side. So, the intention is, is that from either travel direction on Hathley or Tilden, somebody would be able to identify the community and properly and safely go into the community when they see it.
What's that material, Dave?
That is actually like a poly or lexan of some sorts.
Okay.
Can you show it to everyone else, they'll probably be interested in seeing it. Make sure it's right side.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thanks. It's, obviously, it's going to be exposed to some nasty weather, I just, that's why-
It's extremely durable product, yes. We have vetted this out with our vendors, and it's actually, I believe, an aluminum product with almost an automotive-grade finish. It's actually, would last quite a long time.
Good. And Jeff, while you think that this hearing is perfunctory, you were in front of a bunch of boards that didn't have the authority to grant the relief that you seek, so it's only tonight that you're in front of the board that has the authority to grant the relief that you seek. So, I would respectfully object to you saying that it's perfunctory, it is necessary.
I stand corrected, Mr. Acting Chairman.
So, is there, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this hearing?
I'll make an observation.
Sure.
All of the masonry on this sign can be done by right, it's a wall. It doesn't exceed six feet. It's, the plantings and all could be done, all we're really talking about is, can they put letters on this wall that's going, that can be built by right?
It's only the letters, the letters alone.
It is.
The letters alone.
I came to arm with the definition, but you get it, but it's-
And whether it's in the illumination foot, again, I think that the quality of the sign, the type of the sign, has been vetted by other boards. The public's had a lot of time to have a look, but if there's no one here who wants to take this one last opportunity.
And Dave, on behalf of the zoning board, or behalf of myself, I don't speak for the zoning board, on behalf of myself, Toll Brothers has been crucified in social media. And I was on the board when we had a 250-unit 40B that was rammed down the town's throat, and Ed was also, that was rammed down the town's throat despite our valiant attempts to appeal it.
We got a bocce court.
We, 250 units of housing-
By somebody that was not Toll Brothers.
By Polty Homes. And, but for the economy tanking and Polty's home following thereafter, Polty Home stock following the economy tanking, we'd be looking at 250 units of a 40B on that location. And 150 market rate homes, I think, is infinitely better than what was initially proposed. And while my preference, my personal preference, would be to see the land turned into playing fields or a park, I don't have the kind of resources that you folks have to develop the land. So, if the land is going to be developed, and it is, it's inevitable, I'm glad to see it be developed by somebody that is invested in the town and is invested in improving and trying to make the property look as good as possible. So, thank you on behalf of, on my behalf. So, I'll make a motion that we move to grant the relief as sought by Toll Brothers, or whatever they are, Toll 3 or something, Toll Mass Land III Partnership, whatever that is, in accordance with a plan dated April 20, 2017, as submitted by the applicant.
Is that plan the specifics for the permanent signage, Dave? I don't think it is. That plan, I believe, well, Dave will tell you, I just want to make sure that, I think that plan, guys, is an example of the locations where these signs will be. That's a snapshot of the temporary sign plan.
It's a landscape plan, I think.
Yeah, well, it's more than that in a sense, but-
Yeah, it has detail, it's just-
Yeah, it's small.
I read that detail to look a little like that.
So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much, we greatly enjoyed your time, both my matters.
You're welcome.
Proposed decision on that, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Get that to you guys next week.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
You're welcome.
The next application is of Adria Gallagher of 54 Collier Road, Situate, Mass, requesting a special permit slash finding in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, Indoor, Section 8, 10.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw, to construct in addition to the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling, increasing the gross floor area by not more than 20%, and to allow the reconstruction of a nonconforming accessory shed at 54 Collier Road. Representing the applicant this evening is Mr. Paul Marabito of Ross Engineering, and more importantly, is Adria. Adria, how you doing?
I'm doing well.
I'm doing well. Thanks for coming out tonight. What is it that you are looking for from the board?
The applicant on the existing dwelling, number 54 Collier Road, and there's an existing shed at the rear of the property. The existing dwelling is shown here across that area, to the rear of it, outlined in green, is an existing addition, and to the right of it is an existing open deck area. What they're proposing to do is, is to raise this portion of the existing dwelling, and in its place, construct an addition to the home, this area here, and this would be a proposed three-season sunroom. This proposed addition of the house does meet the required setback, the proposal is eight and a half feet at this end here, it's 34 feet from the rear property line, or 40 is required, and it's the left side setback as well. With respect to the shed, the existing location of that shed is shown in green, it's present, it's only three tenths of a foot from the northerly property line. It actually encroaches onto the front of the property by 0.4 feet. Under the proposal, we would be moving the rear setback from 0.3 to 5 feet in this location, and 7.3 feet in this location here. Then on the right side, we're going to have a 5-foot setback. The increase in the gross floor area with the proposed addition would be approximately 49%, and we feel that because this is, meets the setbacks, this is less nonconforming, that the approval, that this project would be less detrimental to the neighborhood. I do provide a narrative, this is only chart on the plan which addresses the setbacks I just spoke about. So, with that, I'll end my presentation after the questions you may have.
Thank you. Tom, do you have any questions or comments?
So, I see that the sunroom off the back, so that's coming, that's coming down.
That's coming down.
The addition off the back, is that one story or two stories?
Two stories.
Two stories.
That's one.
One?
It's a single story.
Single story?
Yes.
Okay, and so-
It will be a four-season space as opposed to a three-season sunroom?
So, what exists now in the northwest corner is a patio. So, basically, what we're doing is, we're taking that patio and moving it to the south. And then, where the green is there, that's going to be a bedroom bathroom.
So, the sunroom's going to move over to the-
Southern side.
The southern side.
Right, swapping it.
The brown area will still have a structure on it. It says existing patio to be removed, but basically, the sun deck's sliding over to that space.
Correct.
And the existing shed, which is encroaching and trespassing, is going to, that the, it's going to, the nonconformity is going to be reduced on both the side yard and rear yard.
Yes.
I just didn't know about that.
It was all family back in the old days, up on the cliff. Good to see Jack Farley in the audience tonight, former zoning board member.
The shed got moved over in a hurricane. The shed got shifted in a hurricane.
So, it's a shifted shed? Is it a shifted she-shed? Is there a reason you can't bring the shed eight feet? Or, I mean, I appreciate, three feet makes a difference, but if you're moving it, you're moving it.
It's five, right?
Right, but can it come to eight?
The preference was the architect, I worked with the architect on this.
Concrete pad there, so my guess is that they're working around that pad.
And we need to put a, help me. Okay, thank you.
All right.
So, it would be-
Satisfied my curiosity.
Wonderful.
Anything else?
Not anything.
Are there any, anything else, Paul? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this application? Mr. Farley?
This property's been in the-
Excuse me.
This property, I'm a longtime resident of Third Cliff. This property's been in this family's hands for generations. I've known most of the generations, believe me, and it should stay, and it's nice to see that it's staying in, within the family. We were talking about it before, the history of a family, they're not changing the character of the house, which would be great, because someone, the Rivermore section has changed, and it'd be nice to see a house to remind you what it used to be on Third Cliff. Believe me, and that's the way the chief's doing it right, believe me when I tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got a family.
Quite my family, sir.
Yes, sir?
Brian Kelly, 61 Collier Road, unveritable baby compared to Jack, I haven't thought about it. Third Cliff since 1986.
We won't tolerate these attacks.
I know, I know. But I've lived on Third Cliff since 1986, across the street major, and I'm a 100% sure- But I, I've lived on Third Cliff since 1986 across the street major, and I'm 100% behind this project.
Thank you.
Nice to hear.
Anybody else? Okay, um, uh, motion?
Make a motion on the application of Adria Gallagher, 54 Collier Road, for request for a special permit finding in accordance with Section, uh, Chapter 48, Section 6 of Massachusetts General Laws and 8, 10.2 of the Situate Zoning Bylaw, um, for her addition, increasing the gross floor area by 20 percent to the property of 54 Collier Road as depicted on the plan drawn by Paul Marabito, Ross Engineering, dated August 12, 2019. The proposed addition, um, does not create any new non-conformities or intensify any existing non-conformities, and to the extent it does, it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, hon.
Thank you.
I'll do that one.
Feel the love.
Good, Paul. He's just great, Paul.
Uh, the next application, Jack, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Um, the next application is of Matt Shanley of, uh...
This is Matt. It's good, it's good. I'm just...
The next application is of Matt Shanley of 28 Inner Harbor Road, Situate, Massachusetts, requesting a special permit slash finding in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 470.6 and 8, 10.2 of the Situate Zoning Bylaw to raise and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling at 28 Inner Harbor Road, Situate, Mass, um, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20 percent. Representing the applicant this evening is Dick Rockwood of Rockwood Design. Good evening.
Hi. I am here to represent the Shan, uh, the Shanleys. They couldn't make it tonight, they have a family, uh, issue and they're out of state. So I'm here to represent them. Uh, we're going to tear down the house that was there, uh, and build a house on pilings, on Peggy Beach. I think you have the set of plans with you. And this, this was the structure that we're proposing you do. You have all the elevations there, small scale.
You were not required to submit full plans, uh, in order to, to seek the relief that you are seeking. However, it's always helpful and, uh, good, in my experience, to see what you're proposing to do, uh, other than the, uh, you know, the engineering plan. So thank you for your thorough application.
If you want to have a large copy of the engineering...
But it's, it's stamped by Ross Engineering.
Yes.
And, uh, what it shows is that, um, uh, there's...
I've got a large cover here.
Yeah.
The northerly property line is currently, um, 8.3, so it, it meets. The southerly property line is 7.3. The proposed is eight, so we're reducing that non-conformity. Eastally property line is 7.6 currently. They're proposing 10.8, so it reduces that non-conformity to complying. The westerly property line is currently 221 feet, it will be 218 feet, both complying as only eight feet is required. Um, the lot area, the required is 10,000. It exceeds that at a level of 108. 100 feet and the lot frontage in what is 100 feet. Um, currently, the lot width is approximately 40, so it's non-complying there, but nothing that can be done about it.
Yeah.
Building height is, um, can be between, it's 35 slash 40, it's currently a plus and minus 28, and it's proposed to be 38, so it's within, it's complying in that respect. The existing is 18, uh, 1,824 square feet, proposed is 3,115 for an increase of approximately 70 percent.
Um, yeah, I mean, Dick, there's really not much you can do in terms of your lot width, that's never going to change, um, and you're taking a...
You're reducing all non-conformities.
Yeah, and you're taking... Your neighbors have done before you. Um, so, and again, it's, it's helpful to see the plans, what you're proposing, I think is very attractive. Um, Tom, do you have any, any thoughts or comments?
No, I, I think the architectural, architectural renderings, um, were great, especially when you look at it from the, when you look at the existing photos, when you look at the structure that was just built next door, the yellow house, I think they're, you know, they're similar, I think they're similar heights.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, obviously, you, you know the neighborhood.
Design and everything.
It's always, it's always helpful when the designer isn't designing in a, you know, in a vacuum.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
I, I'd echo that, I, as it's not within the zoning board's purview to have architectural design review, um, but it is nice, particularly for the neighbors, to see what is being proposed. And in a public hearing, neighbors have an opportunity to speak their mind, uh, applicants have an opportunity to listen, and sometimes they can have meetings after the discussion, but we're basically talking about the zoning, um, compliance.
Um, is there anybody that would like to speak to this application? Anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to this application? Pro or con?
For the neighbors on the street.
I'm, I'm sorry, again, again, uh, for the...
Great.
Want to state your name for the record?
Arthur Gibbs.
Thank you. And the neighborhood that supports this also? That's great.
Can we make a motion?
Yeah, please.
Make a motion on the application of Matt Shanley, 28 Inner Harbor Road, Situate, request for a special permit and finding in accordance with Chapter 48, Section 6 and Sections 470.6 and 8, 10.2 of the Situate, uh, Zoning Bylaw. For their request, to raise and reconstruct the property as depicted on the plan prepared by Ross Engineering, dated September 11th, 2019, um, that the, uh, proposed raise and reconstruct doesn't create any new non-conformities, and in fact reduces a number, and to the extent that it intensifies or, or does increase, that it's not substantially more detrimental, and also pursuant to 470.6, A through F, that we issue that special permit as well.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'll do that one. Uh, the next application is of the Grantham Group, requesting a modification to the comprehensive permit for Lawson Green, accordance to Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23. Uh, the request submitted, um, is for insubstantial administrative changes for the project located at Central Park Drive in Situate, Mass, which, for those who are curious, is where I went to elementary school. Um, representing the applicant this evening, again...
Michael Cuciara.
Is, uh, Michael from the Grantham Group. Michael, what do you have, what is, what is changing?
So principally, what I am requesting tonight is some amendments to the decision of February 12th, 2018, on the comprehensive permit, and as it relates to the sequencing of certain events, uh, within, as laid out in the, uh, comprehensive permit are problematic because it's sort of like a cart-horse scenario. Uh, there are certain documents that are requested, uh, in the comprehensive permit that don't get created until after there's financial closing. You can't get to a financial closing unless you have a building permit, you, uh, you know, and so I can't close the, I can't have final plans, for example, until the state approves my plans, and at that point, they're final plans, and under the comprehensive permit, it requests that I submit final plans to the inspecting engineer prior to requesting a building permit. So I can't do that, that's not, that's sort of out of sequence, um, from the way it would have to typically go. Additionally, there's a 45-day review period that's imposed to review the plans in advance of requesting a building permit, but again, you can't get, I can't, I can't develop final plans because I don't have a building permit, because it's haven't gone through a financial closing, so the state won't sign off. So I understand, um, probably the, the attorney that prepared the, uh, the comprehensive permit is probably more attuned to working with, uh, you know, unfriendly 40Bs or non-friendly 40Bs.
Or for-profit 40Bs versus, uh, like, you're like a quasi-government entity that's doing this, though. It's like a...
Right.
It's like a cooperative project between the town and the Grantham Group.
Correct.
And it's, it's a, a non-adversarial, uh, relationship, and, um, and your funding is contingent on this progress, I mean, this project progressing. Absent that progress, you lose your funding and you get shoved, shoved to the back of the line.
That is an accurate assessment.
So...
Not what we want.
Yeah, no, and, and this, again, this is something that the town will benefit from, um, and, uh, and by, by extension, the Grantham Group, but the town benefits greatly. So, um, Michael, how can we help you?
So if we could just walk through the, there's a couple different specific conditions that I, uh, have addressed in this request, and then there's some, there's subsequently some things that we could potentially discuss as well that might, uh, be helpful to amend the comprehensive permit. So the first one, just, uh, condition number three, under the original, um, comp permit under the order, uh, decision under Section 4, Order, uh, Order and Conditions on, I guess it paid, like, it doesn't have page number, but, um, the final site plan, again, uh, the submission of a final site plan is a condition precedent to issuance of a building permit. That's problematic, because we can't have a final site plan until a state, uh, reviewing architect signs off on it, and then we have a financial closing. I think that what the difference of this project, this 40B versus others, is that this is, there, there's like a, a very substantial and robust review process with the state.
Government-funded.
Yeah, government-funded.
Can I just ask one thing?
Yes.
Could we just, I just want to kind of back the knot up and try to figure, what's the order of operations, like, how, if you tell me, just so I know from my edification when you're talking about this, what needs to happen first?
Okay, so what...
Do a timeline.
So what we need to do right now, we're, uh, timeline in terms of a project, like...
To get this thing to happen.
Okay, so we need to get a financial closing. In order to get to a financial closing, we need to have final construction drawings signed off by the state. That will, and, and a building permit. We cannot close without, there's about 500 items, and that's not an exaggeration, on the closing checklist, that have to be created. Everything from geotech to environmental reviews to, you know, subordination agreements and, you know, other financing documents. So there's an obligation upfront as part of that closing process, because you've got five different parties at the table to present that, you have to present before they put their money in, they need to know that this thing's ready to go, and one of those items is the building permit.
So you need us to waive the 45 days so that the plans can come in and a building permit can be issued quicker than 45 days?
Correct, correct. That, and the big, the problem is, it's, if you waive the 40, yeah, waive the 45-day review requirement and just have, have us just be able to present the plans to the inspecting architect and not have this additional time lapse, because those aren't going to be, as it's written now, they wouldn't be final plans, because it's, they're, it's out of sequence.
Sure.
So can I ask something?
Yes.
From my perspective?
Absolutely.
If, if, what will we have in, or, uh, to, what am I trying to say here? What are we going to have in front of us to issue a building permit based on?
You'll have, uh, 90 percent drawings and finalized and approved by the state's reviewing architect.
Okay, so the state review happens prior to them coming in for a building permit?
And they're, they're architectural plans, it's not like drawn on a cocktail napkin, it's, it's...
Correct, they're full construction drawings. And the issue is, is that the state reviewing architect doesn't get assigned until you're in the clo, at, at, in the closing queue. So it's like this sequencing thing that has to occur, where you can't, I can't go tomorrow and say to the state, assign me a reviewing architect so that I can fulfill these conditions. You're like, well, you're not ready to close.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's like, so to the extent that we can minimize all those challenges that are...
Sure.
You know, and we, I think we're, we're adhering to the spirit of 40B decision here.
There's no, there's no question, again, we, we want to help you.
Okay.
And, and by extension, I know that you want to help the town. So can you submit a proposed, some proposed language of how, I would like to amend the decision, and here is my proposed amended decision, as to condition three, that, and I believe you've got the language in here, the ZBA's review run co-terminus with the building inspectors review, okay? Condition seven, blah, blah, blah. Condition 17, just, and it, kindly, keep it as simple as possible for your benefit and for the, the next 200 people that are going to be looking over your shoulder, questioning, Michael, why did you do this? So, um, just keep it as simple as possible. We will work with you to the greatest extent that we can, and at the same time, do our best to protect the town, uh, and protect the, the future residents of this, this property.
Great. Um, I can certainly do that. Condition number seven in my request...
Yes.
Concerned the subdivision A and R, we resubmitted a new Mylar.
I, I signed one the other day, is this a different one?
Is this fully signed yet, or?
I believe it is, yes.
It can be done right now.
There are four more words missing from the signature block that...
Okay, we can, we can sign that...
On the new one or on the old one?
No, I, I have...
No, this is, yeah, they wanted, you wanted to get out...
It was just, and I was just...
I was going to suggest in this meeting that probably something you want to leave on the, like, that's...
Yeah, so I, I, I went ahead and, there was no benefit. This is just, I was, if my architect hadn't, or, excuse me, my surveyor hadn't prepared that, hadn't resubmitted it, I just wanted, it was a placeholder, but, no, number seven's withdrawn. Uh, condition number 17 is a, is a sequencing issue as well, which is, the tax regulatory agreement...
Yeah.
Doesn't occur until you've closed on the project and it's about a year out afterwards.
Okay. And again, just whatever proposed language...
I will write it up. Uh, condition number 29, uh, just concerns the name of the, uh, the transfer of the permit from the Grantham Group to our special purpose vehicle.
Yeah.
That vehicle is called Lawson Green SLR, I believe it is misspelled as SLF on your, um, uh, on your, on your forms, and I apologize for that, and I will, I will submit the same language, this is just a notification.
Yeah. A rose by any other name, Michael.
There's also, yeah, there's two other items that I wanted to discuss. One was, uh, the special permit also talks about nominal consideration, that the housing authority had conveyed, will convey the property to our group for nominal consideration, as originally adopted, uh, for various reasons, uh, that are mundane and, and, uh, tax-related. I think it's black, it has to be more cool.
Yeah, I think it's, it's supposed to be black, too. Here you go.
Um, we have instead entered into an 80-year ground lease with this, uh, housing authority, uh, so we just wanted to get, again, consent from the ZBA to that.
Absolutely. Why, why is that? I mean, I know it's irrelevant and it doesn't, I'm just more curious than...
My attorney, uh, told me to, that I had to add more, and I'm doing what I'm, you know, I'm...
Sure, no, 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 that's fine, that's fine.
So I'm getting, I'm getting that, that bit out of the way as well. The other item was just, um, one thing I had discussed was the idea, since in Massachusetts, when you do one of these tax credit projects, the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, assigns the project a supervising architect. Well, when you close with a, a bank or your investor, they also have a supervising architect that comes to the party. And what they've done over the years, instead of having five supervising architects at the table, all, you know, reviewing plans and the entire scope of the project, they created a mechanism by which one supervisor, everybody, basically the lenders, the investors, the state agencies, uh, they all kind of get together and agree to have, to use the same supervising architect, and then are labeled as reliance parties on those, um, on the, uh, inspecting architect's review. So the inspecting architect takes everything from soup to nuts, utili- The inspecting architect takes everything, from soup to nuts, utility lines, permits, and it could be possible that they can take on the obligations here without having to reinvent the wheel by having another supervising architect. We have five, so far we have five parties that are signed up for our, the DHCD's inspecting architect, who is, you know, representing them throughout the course of construction. They're on-site every week, they check, they run through the disbursements, they ensure that these are being built according to plan, and it's, it's a very, very thorough review. They also have a role pre-construction in making sure that the design adheres to the conditions here, and then the approved site plans and building plans. So it was one, one of my thoughts was, would it be possible, if the town, if the board would entertain it, to become a reliance party on the state's inspecting architect? It's up to you, it's not a deal killer for us, it would, it brings certain efficiencies. I don't know what the timeline is on procuring the inspecting architect, the, the board.
I think we could meet, meet the timeline, I don't think that would be a problem to get proposals and evaluate them, but, you know, I, I am in sympathy with the idea that too many cooks in the kitchen and it kind of becomes useless. The town engineer on projects such as this and the other 40Bs that are going forward, or let's, let's make a distinction, the town engineer on a typical 40B is looking out for the interests of the town in terms of especially underground work and utilities and things like that, that the town is going to, so to speak, inherit. That will be the case here as well, of course, the town's going to inherit what's built and have to maintain it over the years and that sort of thing. I, I get the concept of being a reliance party, and maybe that's, maybe that's appropriate and would be a lot less cumbersome and a little bit less expensive. I mean, we're not talking a lot of money, maybe $10,000, $12,000 if we were to hire the town's, you know...
Do we have like a go-to reviewing architect?
We have a list, this, that's been developed of about half a dozen firms that have been pre-qualified, so we typically go out to three of those that seem to, to match the project best and get proposals. We've done that on Harrington Brook, we've done that on Stockbridge Landing.
Yeah, I know, I see this, I see this project as a little bit different.
Yeah.
I, I, personally, I don't have a problem with using this, the same reviewing architect. Be, what is, what is the term that you use, Michael?
Inspecting architect.
Yeah, no, 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 the reliance...
Oh, yeah, reliance partner, yeah.
That would be, the town is entitled to rely on the findings, recommendations, reports of, of that entity, even though the town doesn't have a direct contract with that entity.
Well, that would, they would create a, a document that would allow you to have rights, and I get to pay for it, I mean, I'm going to pay for it either way, but...
What, I guess, what are we looking at in terms of money? Say 12,000 to 15,000 to review the plans with our own guy, our own person, our own individual?
Yeah.
Versus...
Well, not just review the plans, but hang with the project all through construction and report back to us on underground utility installation, base cores on the roadways, things like that, you know, placement of the erosion control, dust control during the project.
The architect gets involved with all that stuff?
Well, it's an engineer, actually.
Yeah.
Civil engineer that the town hires.
Oh, civil engineer.
What do you think?
The civil engineer that we're, you're talking about is going to be hired by the state.
Yeah, there's an, an architect who has those, those skill sets as well, I mean, it's...
It's an architectural firm that has a civil engineer, has all the skills to do it.
So it's like, you know, Acme Engineer or Acme Design.
So it's not like the developers are not actually hiring this entity?
No, 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 it's a third party, so it's, it's the banks...
Outside by the banks and the investors.
That's protecting, that's protecting their interests, and, and those interests could be adversarial to the developer. The developer decides, I'm going to bury the utilities at a foot, and the supervising engineer's like, no, 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 code says it's got to be whatever, hi.
And we, and as a cooperating or reliance partner, we would get copies of the...
Reports.
Reports, so that we would, we could observe that the compliance is taking place.
Yeah, I mean, you might want to query the housing authority, if they're comfortable with this, they're going to be inheriting this project, basically.
Tom, what do you think?
I think, I don't think that it's an exorbitant cost to also have some...
Like, like our, our own dog in the fight, sure.
Because like Bob said, we're inheriting, the town's inheriting this, and the way that the utilities go in, the, the way that the connections are, is going to be something that we're going to have to deal with going on, and if it costs, you know, $10,000 for somebody to be there through the entire project to make sure that the town's interests are protected...
Yeah, if it's 10 or 15 grand, I, I think, I think, yeah, we should have our own guy. If, you said, you know, it's going to make the project unfeasible or economically unfeasible because it's, it's 100 grand, you know, and if you, if you, you had more of a, I mean, we're, we're doing our best to work with you, but if you were more upset about this, and, and I don't think that you are, I think you think it's pretty reasonable that we have our own person.
Getting a cap on the fee, because it's like, you know, sort of, I, I don't want a blank check situation where, I did a project down in Yonkers, New York, where we had an inspecting engineer, the building was open and commissioned, he had an office in the basement, and he was still insisting that he was working, and so it was like an open-ended, there was no cap on it, so there was no incentive for him to leave.
There was not a not to exceed thing?
So that's sort of what I'd like to get to, if I can keep it to, you know, 10,000 to 12,000 and...
Here's the other thing, if we, if the town was still, say, a reliant partner, that does not mean that we can't also have a third party, so if they're doing, they can review those, that may, I think it'd protect the town, but also maybe also cut, we even cut the cost.
The timing thing is this, since there's two stages of this review that would be going on, and I, I agree, what you have come up with is actually maybe a sensible solution. It's the idea of looking at the plans and having those plans be approved.
Yeah.
That has, that's a condition precedent for me asking for a building permit.
We would not necessarily need the approval of the person or entity we're talking about before issuing a building permit.
Okay, because that's the way the comp permit's written is, it's like, must be approved by, and so, you know, that's, there's a time element here. The dates in this letter have changed, we're pushed back, we're, we're going to be in the ground December 1st, we have to be in the ground December 1st, we have no, we, it's our, we lose our tax credit, we get hit with tax credit adjusters if we're not in the ground.
Okay.
So we're flat out on this, it's all about time.
Sure.
So to the extent, I'm not, I'm fine with if it's a $10,000 thing, but it's just, it's about the time, I can't lose any time in terms of, you know, I'm six, I'm six weeks from final drawings at this point that are going to be everything tied up with all my MEP, yeah, it's, I mean, you have to, it's the...
When do those drawings, drawings then go to the state for review?
That's, that's part, that's part of the process, so it's not like we go, here are the plans, and the state engineer's like, well, now let's start. It's like, we're going like, please look at these right now, look at these right now, but we have to get that guy assigned.
When do you, when do you expect to close?
Mid-November, early November, so let's...
So we can, we can get this person or firm on board within a matter of, say, a week and get the contract executed by the town in another week, so we're, that's the time for...
And then seek reimbursement from the project after we've closed?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we can, we usually ask for money upfront, very honestly, but I understand the situation here, and sure.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, we're, we have a lot of pre-development expenses right now prior to a close, because we don't have our, so we close on our funding, it's all, we're all out of pocket, so to the extent that we can delay that...
I'm not concerned, we can't work something out.
Yeah, I'm sure we can work something out, but if you would submit a proposed, the proposed modification to the plan, Michael, and...
Sure, to the decision.
To the decision.
To the decision, to the decision, I'm sorry, I was...
And, and as simply as possible, as Brian says, I'm looking at condition three, you're simply asking that the, uh, waive the 45-day review period...
Right.
Designate the town building inspector to perform the review on behalf of the board, and that's it, I mean, that's straightforward.
Yeah.
Yep.
So again, keep things as, for, for the, for the town's benefit, as simple as possible, but also keep, be mindful of the, the, you know, 500 or so people that are going to be looking over your shoulder.
And seven you don't worry about, that's, that's just to care of that.
Yeah.
Seventeen is the tax regulatory agreement, we'll just have to, we'll furnish that when the project's complete, because it doesn't exist until...
Amane seventeen to furnish it when the, when the tax regulatory agreement exists.
Would the correct, what is required or say about?
Yeah, yeah, well, no, no, because before, yeah, oftentimes you will use a certificate of substantial completion in order to move certain, for your financing, so, so certain takeouts, so when you're moving different blocks of money, so for sequencing issues, I would just say when, when it's recorded, it will be recorded, there's no way that we're, we'll, we'll probably have this document at close, whether or not it sits on a desk at DHCD for like eight months.
Okay, so it's sort of out of your control.
It is, it is out of my control, but once we have it, we will certainly...
Yeah, okay.
And condition 29 is just a standard, you know, notification that, that, of this assignment of the permit, the comp permit to a special project entity, and then just another, we'll add a request for the consent to the ground lease, and, yeah, I think we can live with that.
Okay.
And so just as a process issue, once this is submitted, would that be, we need to file this, we need to find, file the original decision and then have the amended decision attached to it, so...
Yeah.
What would be the timeline for getting that?
As soon as you submit it, we will be notified by the, by the zoning office, Beth will send us an email and we'll get in to sign it within a week.
Oh, that's perfect, that's wonderful.
Does it have to be physically signed?
Yes, because it's going to be, it's going to be...
There's no deal period or anything like that that travels with this?
No.
It can't be stamped?
No, I think it's, I, I think it should have original signatures. I think it's, it's going to be recorded, right?
Right, because there is an amendment, a determination of insubstantial change in August, and I don't know where that document is either, because that needs to be incorporated into this.
Yeah, that should, that, that...
Is there a, I guess my question is just process...
Was that, that was a, a vote that we took...
Right.
But I don't believe...
But it's in the minutes.
It's in the minutes, but I don't believe it's, I don't believe any decision was written about that, so if you want to issue...
So I can just take the minutes and I can...
Yeah, or if you, for your own benefit, if you want to write a one paragraph at a, hearing the zoning board on such and such a date, the board heard and moved and unanimously approved that the application or application amendment was, changes as proposed were insubstantial and then signed.
And then, again, in the interest of time, you're working with an attorney, between the two of you, you know exactly what you need to have to move this process through, so if you can supply that draft...
Yeah.
We can, if it's in, if it's in accordance with what we've decided, it's easy for us to sign it then, and then there's not a question of getting...
I will provide a...
Changing wording, like, for example, with the, the plan, the Mylar was incorrect, we signed that Mylar, but now we have another Mylar, we have to sign it again, and that's just taking you time, and you don't have that time.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it was something that my attorney did catch and I, I missed on that, so it's the issue.
Along those lines, I guess, a little bit, if you're referring to the building review and approval and condition three, you should refer to the building commissioner as opposed to the building inspector.
Building commissioner, okay.
No big deal, but let's, let's make it right, we have a building inspector, it's not me.
Building commissioner.
Two?
Yeah.
You have two now?
Actually, more like three.
Is there anything else, Michael?
That's it, that's, that's all, maybe I'm just making a note of that commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate the, the board's showing deference to, not deference, but exercise of, of, you know, care.
Expediency.
Expediency.
Yes, we're doing our best to, to help you, because this is going to benefit you and it's going to benefit us.
Yes, I, I fully agree, we are, we're in the, well, we're about to pick our, our contractor, and we're hoping to get in the ground, like I said, in December 1st, so all this stuff, it helps that timeline.
Good.
So, great, thanks very much.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you, I really appreciate it, and I'll have a draft for you for Monday at the very latest.
Thank you.
Then you can email it, email it, and it'll meet...
Yeah, email it to Beth and we'll...
Beth, do you have a copy?
Probably not yet. B, it's B Henigan.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect.
Beth has graced our shores for only about a week now.
Oh, okay.
So we overwhelmed her with...
I, I use the word graced advised at least, it's been a good experience.
All right, okay, great. I'll go to the touch forum as well.
When she has the draft, she can forward it to us, and we can individually review it, send our comments to her, and if she gets three positive comments, then she can go ahead and take the next step.
Great.
We're going to write up that thing, the decision thing?
Yeah.
See if we can review the minutes.
That's correct, yes, so that will be, I think it'd be more efficient to have the one, the decision that amends the decision.
Yes.
All right, thanks so much.
Speaking of minutes, we have three sets of minutes to approve, or four sets?
Yes.
Three or four?
April, May, March, April, May, and August.
Four sets. They were circulated earlier, were there any changes to the minutes as submitted? Move to approve?
Move to approve the four set, four minutes, March, what is that?
21st, 2019, April 25th, May 16th, and August 8th?
Yes.
Second?
All those are...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.